Bonnie McInerney present, Deborah Addy absent, Dennis Shemansky.
Here.
Joanne Shirkey absent, Joe Bozzi alternate absent, Samantha Bynum alternate absent, Brian Tripol.
Here.
So we have a quorum technically of three.
So approval or amendments to the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, approved. Approval of the minutes from September 21st, 2022 meeting.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
To approve? Aye. Zoning Board preface. The Clay Township Zoning Board of Appeals or ZBA primarily addresses practical difficulty based on lot size, location, shape, or contour and/or location of existing buildings. We are guided by section 27.05 of ordinance number 126. There are five members on the ZBA. Three are present tonight. At least three members must vote affirmatively for a motion to grant a variance. Three members constitute a quorum. Each appeal before the ZBA will have a public hearing at which time the applicant will first present his or her case and a public comment regarding that issue will follow. During this time, members of the board may ask questions of a clear of clarification. If a particular point gets belated, the chairperson has the right to limit comments. When the public hearing is closed, the board will move on to deliver to the deliberation of the particular variance request. If the applicant should disagree with the board's decision, he or she has the right to take it to Circuit Court within 30 days of the decision. When your appeal hearing is concluded, you are welcome to leave or stay as you wish. So with that said, there are three members on the board that are present today. All of us have to vote yes for it. So you guys would have the right to postpone your hearing if you don't want to speak in front of just three of us.
Normally there are five.
Normally there are five. So remember, all, all three of us have to vote yes for it to pass, okay? Hang on. So that's just my notes, okay? We'll, we'll get to you in a second. So I'm going to open up new business.
Well, I think you should ask if they want.
And then, so our first case is Jay ZBA 2022-18 at 9386 Pearl Beach. Is someone there? Would you like to state your case today or would you like to postpone it to the next meeting? All right, come on up, state your name and your address, please.
Paul and Kathy Fisher, 9386 Pearl Beach Boulevard. And...
Um, basically, we were...
Can you state your name too, sir?
Oh, Paul Fisher. Yeah. Um, our original plan, we're going to do this garage out back, but it was just so wet over the last several years that we all went through. You know, the flooding and so we needed to move this garage up closer to the house and we had no idea about this two acre rule. We didn't, we were trying, thought we were doing good keeping 14 feet. But uh, we're really just that .017 of an acre over the two, you know, that sort of, that whole back part, if you look on the L shape, is really just unusable.
We, we brought you some pictures so you can see what it looks like on that back half. Would you like to look at them?
Sure.
A lot of it was during the flooding and took over.
Because a lot of the front is back there.
Thank you.
We got flooded from the front, flooded from the back.
You'll see how we had to put a, you know, block it off to keep our yard, you know, up there dry. And we've discussed it with our neighbors that are directly affected and they're good. I think there's a letter in there that they wrote that they're, they're good with it. Um, and we would have been concerned with them, you know, mostly.
So really, we're at 14 feet now instead of the 20. Like I said, when we did all this, we didn't know about the...
The builder didn't either, yeah.
Two acres and changed it up to 20 feet. So we're sort of...
So we're hoping we can get that six feet as the variance and go ahead, put it on the property. What we're really trying to do is Paul's parents, um, mom just died this year and we just put dad in a nursing home. And he's got a beautiful wood shop out there, but we have to sell the house. So we're sort of, you know, in a push to, to move that before we can go ahead and sell their house. So we need, you know, to get this garage put out.
Patent Cor Fisher, I don't know if you know him from the historical group.
Okay. Anything else?
No, we're just hoping you understand the little difference and let us move forward.
Not yet, I've got to open up the public hearing first.
Okay.
And then we'll ask you, so just stay there for one second unless somebody wants to speak.
Sorry, Dennis.
Thank you. I'm going to open up the public comment. Anyone who wishes to speak in this variance for this variance? Anyone? All right, we're going to close public comment. So now I'll ask your questions. So you can't move it over the six feet?
Not in keep the 11, the 10 feet between the house and the garage.
Okay.
Yeah, that was as far as we could get.
So that's...
The front part of the lot is 91 feet. You know, then I split that off back in the eighties.
So it's kind of L shaped?
So it's just a big chunk of land in the back that goes to the marsh. Like I said, we started looking up to build back third above the driveway and to elevate it and...
Just too wet, too soggy.
And what's the length of the back by the marsh?
You mean width?
Yeah.
What is it, 100 and...
198, I think.
Okay, so it's kind of a triangular.
It kind of goes, you know, all the way back and then, you know, L shaped like this. So where the house is and where it's dry enough to put the garage is that little bit narrower where it's spot. And then we open up, but it just gets way too wet back there for us to put something.
I'm sorry, I do have to read this letter from your neighbor.
Okay.
This is...
You have to read it?
You do.
You're a better reader than I am.
All right, this was dated September 12th, 2022. To Clay Township Zoning Board of Appeals from Alan in Marjorie Lebel, 9388 Pearl Beach Boulevard, Clay, Michigan 48001. Regarding 9386 Pearl Beach Boulevard, Clay, Michigan 48001. In regard to our neighbor building a garage on their property directly next to our property, to whom it may concern, our neighbors, Paul and Kathy Fisher, are planning to build a garage next to their house and directly next to our house. We have been made aware that they are .01 acres over the two acre limit. So that makes it so they have to reconsider building their garage. Currently, the plans made, put in place or put them far enough away from our house at 14 feet from the property line to the side of their proposed garage. We are good with their plan and we have spoken about it as they have been working and getting the plans drawn up. We see no problem with the plans they have submitted to the township. If you wish to contact us further, please feel free. Alan in Marjorie Lebel.
Thank you. I don't have any other letters, so that, that will close the public comment. I'm sorry, guys. I knew we had one letter. Can I ask Gary, our billing official, a question?
Of course.
So if you guys want to have a seat for just one minute?
Please. We always bring him up because he's available. What's that? Hi Gary, how are you?
How are you doing?
Again. So they can't go over to the property because it's going to hit the house or come within 10 feet. I mean, it's 14 feet and that, I mean, the neighbors are good. I mean, is there something I'm not seeing?
Yeah.
Besides the, the ordinance that you, you know, I, I definitely had to double check because of the two acres is...
Right, yes. At two acres, the side yard setbacks are increased to 20 foot instead of the typical three for less than two acres. So, you know, at 14 feet, we'd be more concerned if it was too close to the house because of the, the fire potential.
Right.
So we're fine with this 14 foot without any complaint of the neighbor. I think it'll fit nicely in. And yeah, the back part of the property is extremely wet. Be kind of foolish to build back on that. Because it's just going to create failure probably somewhere when the water comes back up, so. So yeah, we have no objection to it.
I mean, it's better than coming within the 10 feet.
Correct.
In line.
Absolutely.
The neighbors, okay. Dennis, do you have anything for?
No, I like his answer though.
I do have one question, if I may. The legal notice. It says that they are seeking a six foot side yard setback. Minimum side ba, side yard setback is 20 feet. What they're actually seeking is a six foot variance, correct?
Yes, correct.
Good with that verbiage?
Are you concerned about that verbiage?
No, only because we have no public here to object to it. And I don't see any issues. I don't proofread those notices that go out. But yeah, it is a six foot variance, not a six foot side yard.
Okay.
Okay.
Just wanted to get that on record.
So what we would be granting would be a six foot variance if we determine that that's what we want to do?
Correct.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you.
What I was doing is I was, I was talking, I was listening multitasking here, but I was just figuring out the square footage, everything of the property here. They are just 750 square feet more than the two acre, you know, allowable. Just 750 square feet. This is, it's so close, that .01, it's only 750 square feet out of 87,870 square feet.
I do like the rule, the ordinance how it's written though, because if they wanted to put a barn with horses in it, 20 feet is a little bit better than, I know we can't do it in two acres, I guess I misspoke, but you know what I mean? I, I don't, I don't disagree with the ordinance though. This is a unique situation, I mean, I get it. But as far as 1% over, I mean, it's still two acres. So that person that's like, I got two acres, I, I, and there's other things with two acres that they can build that person with 1.99 can't build.
Right.
You know what I mean? So I guess a little bit over is not in, in my eyes a condition that, you know, it would have been worse if we had three feet over there. All right, you guys, I can't make a motion, so.
Give me a minute.
Bonnie's turn.
Hang on.
I couldn't make any of those two meetings because somebody wasn't here.
You're, you're due for one.
So just let me get it written down first and then I'll do it.
She's writing before she says it.
I would do the same.
Sometimes it's easier.
Oh, yeah.
Are you for or against it? At least throw one out at us.
I'm for it, just give me a minute.
Leaving us all on suspense here. That's even easier.
Sorry, I'm cranky today.
I'd still go higher if I was you, whatever she throws out at us, but don't flood out your garage.
Gosh, no.
That is a nice size though.
All right, then I will make a motion that we grant a six foot variance to allow for them to build their garage. The practical difficulty is the unusual shape of the lot located on marshy ground in the rear and it's only slightly over the two acres. The unique situation is the shape of the lot, not self-created. It was purchased as is, did not create lot dimensions, keep it 10 feet from the house. Substantial justice will allow them to have what others in the area are allowed, not contrary to the ordinance, fits in with what the rest of the neighborhood is allowed.
I will second that.
Okay, we'll call.
Um, hold on, we have too many sheets now, but it's my fault because I asked for them. Dennis Shemansky?
Yes.
Bonnie McInerney Slater, yes? Brian Tripol?
Yes. Had to do it official.
She hasn't wrote down.
She had, there, she wrote it down.
Yeah.
Yeah, you get those.
You get this? Ask me to make you a copy. Okay. Do you want me to go through the whole motion again? Hold on, one second. Okay, give me one second.
We got to get you one of those shorthand typewriters. I couldn't do it, there's no way. Chairman's easier than that.
So I want advice to her and I gave up secretary.
I'm sorry, she didn't show today.
I said the practical difficulty is that the unusual shape of the lot and it's located on marshy ground in the rear. So that would not allow for building on that particular portion of the property and that it's only slightly over the two acres. And it's still 10 feet from the home and still 14 feet from the neighbor's house.
Property line.
The property line. Yeah, I would ask her to start giving you these sheets too.
Yeah, I thought you got those. Okay. Motion granted.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Variance granted, sorry. Okay, so we are going to go to Jay ZBA 2022-019 at 6890 Sword Out. Representative come up, state your name and address, please.
Marilyn Andros, 6890 Sword Out, Clay.
Frances Andros, 6890 Sword Out, Clay Township.
Do you guys want to state your case in front of three of us? Or do, would you like to postpone until the next meeting? Before you say anything that, yes or no?
I just have a question, if there's seven of them, do they all seven have to be, or five, do they all five have to be in the grants?
No, there still only has to be three, so...
Only have to be three out of the five?
Three out of the five. So...
Well, we're here, we might, we might as well go through with it.
All right, I had given pictures and things and I didn't know if I was supposed to do that.
Yeah, okay.
Yes. This all started with a little rescue dog that we got. This little rescue dog has cost us a fortune. I hired Tim Wolf. I hired, I hired Tim Wolf to build a nice fence for me and he gave me samples of it. It was the nice things that you see with just the bars in it. And I gave him a $2,900 deposit that was back last March. It, he kept giving me excuse after excuse after excuse. In August, I says if I don't get a fence, I'm going to call the police or go file a, a case. So I went up and talked to Officer Rockley. And he told me that there's been some issues with that, that all the text and everything, he could see that I'm getting the runaround. So I went to Circuit Court and filed, but then he did send me my money back. He, after all this went on, he sent me back $2,900. And then when I went on a trip to go visit my uncle down south, who's 92 and not doing well, my husband decided to surprise me and put up a fence, which I've, I've been doing all of the work with the fence and the porch and blah, blah, blah. He knew nothing about the variance. So then when they came out to do the tax assessment to see the porch, they seen that it was a black chain link fence. Well, this black chain link fence is 230 feet, 230 feet from the road. You could barely see it. Anything you want to add?
We talked, one neighbor can't even see it on the west side, that west side neighbor, they can't even see the fence. And on the east side, they could see it, but they have no objection at all to us having the fence there. And I was, I was unaware that she was doing all this with Tim Wolf and I didn't know nothing about it. So when she went to visit her sick uncle, I surprised her. I said, oh, me and my buddy will, will put in a fence and I did, it was not a, a black chain link fence, not. So, but if you look at the pictures, you can see that you can't even see the fence from the, you know, it's 230 feet from the road. So other than that, I don't know, nothing else. We're both retired, fixed income and, you know, money's kind of tight, so.
That's enough, I guess.
What's that?
Okay. Just have a seat, I think we have a couple. I'm going to open up to public comment regarding this issue. If you would like to speak in this case, come up, say your name and address, please.
Joel Pytech, 6856 Sword Out. We're on the east side of the Andros family for the last four years. You know, far as I'm concerned, that's probably the best stretch or one of the best stretches of Clay Township right in there. And the only unfortunate part is, is it's a rural area, so we have to deal with a lot of fast traffic, right? Then we also have to deal with a lot of wildlife, particularly coyotes and fox, so. You know, and I'm challenged with it too, with our dogs and also our chickens and poultry that we have. But anyway, I can understand why the Andros is what it went to the level to put in one of these fences at their property, right? For security of their dog that they did rescue prior to the fence even being put up. I've gotten a couple of calls where Marilyn is chasing her dog in my yard somewhere throughout the yard because this dog was a runner from originally. You failed to mention that. This dog will bolt at any section chance that she possibly can, even though she looks like the sweetest little thing. It could be in one of those canned dog food commercial ones, you know, the white fluffy.
I have one of those too.
See, there you go. But this one will bolt at a moment's notice. So along with that, I think it was a wise decision. Unfortunately, it's a township variance issue because of where that's positioned. And I don't think I used my terminology properly. However, because they built this and have this beautiful backyard that we go over and enjoy as neighbors in the family with the deck that they spent a lot of money into creating a lot of family areas in, it didn't really allow for that fence to get put back in there. So I hope that it goes to the board and also to anybody else that might be here related to this, that this was a wise decision for them. It's very clean, it's very tight, it is, it's, it's hardly at all, even, even the remote sense, an eyesore or mistaken type of construction that would impede anybody's value of their home or for that matter, the area. So for that matter, I am in agreeance or I'm on board with their fence. I have no objections would be the best way to say that.
Thank you, Joel.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Come up, state your name and address, please.
My name is Lisa Sands.
Oh, you got to stand in front of the mic, I'm sorry, it's all rules.
My name is Lisa Sands. My address is 6912 Sword Out. I am the neighbor to the west, correct?
Yes.
Andrews, to, to their, to the west of them. You cannot see that fence even from the road. I can't see it from my house. I am all on board for that fence. They're responsible pet owners, they're great neighbors and it shouldn't be a problem. You can't even see it. So, and it's so small, I don't see what the problem is.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Name's Gary Fisher.
Close public comment first. And Gary, obviously we're going to bring you up. So fences are a hot, hot ticket, a hot item in, in Clay Township. So this is unique. So what question do you have? Because I have one.
Okay, my question is, I'm and granted, we had like three different sets of drawings for this one. So I'm probably not sure which one I'm looking at correctly, but how far into the front yard does it protrude?
It's, it is way back. It's back right by the house. It's a small area for their dog to run in. And yes, realistically, you cannot see it from the road. I would have not have known just because, you know, the, the front yard is natural, so it's wooded and you can't see anything back there. But...
So would a practical difficulty be that the backyard is wooded and you're not able to put a fence back there?
Well, typically the fence could go back there. There could be a fence in the front yard under our ordinance if it was a decorative style fence. But something I would like to point out is that there was by a contractor submitted an application for the fence permit. And it was quickly denied because it was a vinyl coated cyclone instead of a decorative per our definition. And I do believe that they were kind of taken by this contractor, letting them believe that they in fact were getting the permit and the permit was just, had to go pick it up more or less, when realistically it was knocked down because it wasn't decorative in nature. And I don't think they relayed that message back to the property owners. So the property owners said, okay, this is a fence we picked out. This is a fence that we want, agreed to and was supposed to get by the contractor. And when the contractor pretty much was taking them for their money, they were still in the impression that the permit would have granted this type of fence in the front yard. So, you know, I, I would have to side with them because of the fact, I think they were taken by a contractor. And I don't think that they really knew they were doing anything wrong in this case. I think the fence that they picked out is the fence basically that they put up without the contractor.
That's a different I, because I didn't read every single one of the texts between the contractor, but I, I guess I would understand somewhat of that confusion where if they thought it was going to be...
Let's keep in mind too, this is over five acre property, which like he said, you can't from the road, you cannot see it. You wouldn't even know there's a house there, let alone, you know, to drive it through there snooping around. Do you even come about this?
We've had a lot of things with fences. A chain link fence is not a decorative fence. Let's just go again.
We got that part.
Say that, all right?
Right.
Even though it's vinyl coated black, it's better than the, the norm, but it still was not approved by whomever, I think us too, as a decorative fence through...
I don't think this ever came to us.
Yeah, I think we had to do interpretation of a decorative fence on that.
They, right, but I mean, this case did not come...
Not in this case.
And they may have changed the ordinance.
Every case is different though, every case is different and unique. I do believe with this circumstance that you can't see it. If they didn't cut some other woods down on the front, you wouldn't see it, you know? I don't know. I, I think they're over five acres?
They're 5.14. You know, when you look and you think about how this, that holds, that ordinance was written, it's written from, from visibility. So you're driving downfield and you have a fence going all the way thing. It's something that can be seen and that's why they want it to be decorative or not obscured. But when you're, you have all those trees and everything else obscures everything of that property. Why don't we say, oh, tear down those trees? Because it's blocking the view of your house. You know, I mean...
And there are some communities that would say that.
Right.
I would never want someone to have to tear down a tree.
No, no, I get it, but that's, but that's...
I mean, in New Baltimore, we used to have fights over whether or not six foot over 50s were...
But I guess with... But I guess with, my point.
The decorative, so it.
I, I'm just saying that is, to wherever the camera is, that a decorative fence is not a chain link fence.
Correct.
So the next case might not be this circumst- it might be down Sassy, it might be somewhere where it is.
Oh, right, right.
A different situation.
Each and every case is a different situation.
In this five acres, they could cut all the woods down and put electric fence and have horses all the way to the road. And that's not a decorative fence either, it's a electrified fence.
But it's not obscured.
I'd rather see a black chain link fence than, than have that all the way to the road. This is setback far enough, and sorry to keep you up here, Gary.
It's okay.
But I think it's unique, and I just, you know, I don't like that you did it without permit, I have to say that too, but in the same, I don't see.
Well, they were on the, on the, and Gary agrees, they were on the assumption that it was a done deal.
But it still wasn't done.
Right.
You know, I'm just saying, I don't want anyone to do that, and I also don't want anyone to think that if we allow this chain link fence, it's not a decorative in the front yard. Because this is a hot issue on a lot of different roads and a lot of different pieces of property. And a lot of ordinances have been changed, verbiage have been changed due to the fence issue.
Right.
That's why I thought this was unique coming in front of us going, hmm, this is a little opposite, so far back versus so far forward. I, I'm for it, but I, I can't make a motion, and I don't know if we need any, you know, more mo-, you know, clarification on this, no, we need to split it up a little bit.
I, hey, I made the last four or five.
I will make a motion.
Thanks, Gary.
I will make a motion to approve based on the practical difficulty being that the rear of the yard is so wooded, it would be difficult to put in a fence. And due to some misunderstandings with the contractor, it did create a unique situation. Normally, I would say this was self-created, but under this circumstance, given the history of the court documents and everything else in this case, I think we can make the argument that they were under the belief that they were allowed to do this. Also, the unique situation is how far back it is from the street, the size of the property. It's not interfering with the neighbors or any clear vision, you know, anything like that. Substantial justice. It allows them to have the fence that they are require, are requesting, and not contrary to the ordinance. It fits in with the neighborhood, and again, you can't see it from the road.
Can you put in stipulation that the location that it presently is?
Correct.
Versus going out any further towards the road?
Correct, it has to maintain where it's at, and it cannot go any further toward the front of the property.
I will second that.
Okay.
Get that?
Saving a puppy or a dog.
Don't talk to me about dogs right now.
All right, roll call, because all three of us have to vote yes, uh, roll call.
Dennis Shemansky?
Yes.
Bonnie McHenry Slater, yes. Brian Trappo?
Yes. And thank you neighbors for coming and stating your case, it does.
It was easier when I wrote it out.
It does help that we get an understanding of the neighborhood too. Letters are great too, don't get me wrong, but it, it does help if the neighbors are for or against it too, it does help. So you gotta finish up with Gary on whatever you gotta do for.
I don't have to get a going for my job, by the way.
I'm sure you would have to, yeah.
Still have to go apply for going.
Yeah, you'll have to talk to Gary, you know, tomorrow, or, yeah, tomorrow he's, he should be around. Call the office and see what you gotta do to, to make it official. But I don't want you to go again any further forward.
Oh, no, we, no.
Okay, that, not that, we're gonna measure right now, but we don't want to grant you permission all the way to the road.
Well, it is recorded 2:30, and their house is 2:31.
Well, I'm just saying. Do you want your pictures back? Oh, see, that's good, thank you. Give me a minute or two?
Do you want to keep these?
What's wrong?
You want to keep these in your folder, or you have some?
I have one, I mean, I'll keep another one.
Well, no, I've got four or five.
Oh, I got one.
It is cold.
Uh-uh, what is this? It's all recorded. We'll, we'll play this back later. Oh. Look at here.
Oh, is there stuff that I was supposed to read?
Well, you just jump right into, uh.
Yeah, we're gonna, you good? Can I keep going?
Give me one second.
I was gonna say that chair sunk down, she looks like she can barely see over the thing.
That chain link fence, I'll tell you right now. It's gonna be the.
Fences and boat houses.
Good?
What's the number?
19 cases already this year.
What's that?
It's 19 cases this year already.
Sign me like a what?
Thank you. All right, so now, as we're signing, we're gonna go to any, I'm gonna close new business, there's not, there's nothing more. Any unfinished business? I'm not aware of. Report from client, planning commission, we don't have one. Anyone else? Review?
Well, just other than that name that we need to get clarified, it.
Right, we'll figure that out.
I'm gonna call Cindy or call Artie and find out. One, we need our two alts, no matter what, one of the alts should be showing up to, you know, a meeting. And two, if Joanne is no longer on our board, who?
Who is?
Who is?
Right.
All right, so we'll have a new, I'll have Cindy.
Right.
Give us, you know, the new.
Because just from a legal standpoint, I don't like only having three of us here.
True, but.
I mean, I know it's allowed, it's in our bylaws.
It's in our bylaws, so.
But. Anyway.
I could, I could see it, they had their choice tonight, so it worked out for them, but.
Normally, this is one that I probably would have said no to had they not had all the problems with the contractor, and it wasn't an unusual situation where the property was so far back that you can't even see it. So. Is that it?
I like the five acres. Public comment, anyone? Joel? Leanne, wanna speak again? No? Gary, you good? All right, no one wants to speak.
Motion adjourned.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.